This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 25th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Derek Tucker, Union Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Oh Lord God, how excellent is your name. We invoke your presence, we make appeal to your sovereign judgment, to your wise providence. We ask you now, God, to give us strength, give us wisdom, give us unity, bless our elected officials, our appointed officials, and bless all of your people. We love you, we honor you with the fruit of our lips. It is in your name we do pray. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone. This is probably the package house we have since this new council has started. We do welcome everyone to our weekly city council meeting. On statement of rules, at this time I ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other type of electronic device, please at this time, we ask you to put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council... Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance appeal, a public hearing, agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his and her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. I know many of you are here to address and show your support for or against ordinance Just to let you all know that that will be held over for another week. The council does have a committee meeting on this afternoon regarding this particular item.
Mr. President, you might identify what that ordinance is.
And again, the ordinance 39-003 is the ordinance regarding the urban camping and improper use of public places. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of January 11th and 18th.
So moved.
They're properly moving second, in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everybody here this morning. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to join us. I have one announcement, and that will be followed by a presentation of Officer of the Month for both firefighters and for policemen, and then I'll make a presentation having to do with redistricting. But my first announcement is to congratulate and thank two people who have recently retired from the Industrial Development Board. In the city of Mobile, in economic development, the Industrial Development Board plays an important part in the process of bringing new business to the city of Mobile. So I want to recognize Rob Guthans and Daniel Dennis, both for their years of service on the Industrial Development Board. They have both recently resigned, so thank you for their service. At this time, I'll call on Chief Pyne, and Chief Pyne is going to introduce the Officer of the Month, Tyler Murphy.
Morning, Mayor, staff, city council. Glad to be here today. I'm really glad to be here today to talk about Officer Tyler Murphy. Just a little brief summation, he's only been on the department for a year and a half. For the month of December, he's answered over 150 calls for service, made 19 felony arrests, multiple citations, being very proactive in the third precinct. That being said, there were two highlights as a part of December that I think are important to know. We all know, and you've all heard us say, you can't arrest your way out of criminal activity, so to speak, or crime. But what this gentleman did here today, he got a call of a suspicious subject over around Springdale Boulevard. He didn't just go to the area, clear up, and leave. He actually went over there and found the individual. When he found the individual, the individual was there, had multiple warrants for theft, fraudulent use of credit cards, et cetera, and had really no reason to be over there other than to be involved in criminal activity. He arrested the individual, and what he did was prevented additional crimes from being reported over in that particular area where we have such a huge problem. Another issue is that he took an individual that was on bond for murder in the Tomanville area, who had ran from police. Again, he didn't give up there when they didn't find him. They conducted an exhaustive search, found the individual, and found out he had multiple warrants for menacing domestic violence, et cetera. This is indicative of the officer that we're trying to hire with the Mobile Police Department. Appearance, attitude, competence, and service are the standards of professionalism that we're pushing with the Mobile Police Department. And for that, the city of Mobile, the Mobile Police Department would like to honor and recognize Officer Tyler Murphy for a job well done.
At this time, I would ask Chief Jeremy Lemey to introduce the firefighter of the month, Ann Williams.
Good morning, everyone. Also, we're here today to recognize firefighter of the month, Ann Williams. Ann began her career with Mobile Fire Rescue Department in 1995 as a firefighter, and her assignment marks history as the first African-American female firefighter for the city of Mobile. She not only broke barriers locally, but also was one of the first nationally pioneered women to the fire service. But I'll tell you, that's not why she stands here today. She stands here today because of the example she sets each and every day. Ann, if you know anything about Ann, and you could ask anybody in our department, she takes a tremendous amount of pride in what she does each and every day. And for that, we're extremely grateful and appreciate all that you do for us each and every day. So on behalf of all the citizens and everyone here, we'd just like to thank you and congratulations on being firefighter of the month.
So at this time, I'm going to start a presentation having to do with the redistricting plan, and what we're going to do is walk you through what we've been doing up to this point, and this presentation is all part of us fulfilling a commitment we made to make sure that the plan is transparent and that we can have public involvement. One of the things that we did prior to developing our plan was we looked at the cities that were doing a good job in redistricting, and we focused on Huntsville and Auburn, feeling like they had done the very good jobs. They were a little bit ahead of us in their process, and so some of the things that you will see are things that we actually copied from those two cities. I would like to commend Councilman Carroll for putting forward a resolution, which I have co-sponsored, which outlines the community meetings with each councillor in their district. That is something that's the first time I think this happened just this way, but so thank you for that, Councilman Carroll. Also, we're committed to providing the council and citizen transparency tools for their use in these conversations, and that's actually what we're looking at, is one of the tools that citizens can use to help educate yourself about the process, but also to keep abreast of the process as it moves forward. Today, we're rolling out an interactive website, and that's what you're looking at here. The address for that website is www.cityofmobile.org/redistricting-2022. On that website, now what you will find are the ways that citizens can get involved, a list of frequently asked questions, the interactive map, which we'll walk through in detail in just a moment. We'll have a citizens' feedback form that will have the latest news, and we'll have community meeting calendar. Also, today at noon, we'll have a virtual town hall meeting and one at 5:00. So if you see me leave the council meeting before it's over, it's because I'm going to start that virtual meeting for the city, virtual town hall meeting regarding redistricting. The virtual town hall meetings, they too will be put on the website for anybody that can't be there at 12:00, you know, or at 5:00 this afternoon. I want to thank the GIS Department, who created the map for citizens to access all of the data points that guide the redistricting process. So David Mayhaw is going to assist me in this process of making, as we walk through this slide presentation. But this is a map of the city of Mobile. The blue lines that you see are the existing city council districts. Six, just to pop around on a couple of them. One, two, three, seven at the top, but we'll go through that in just a moment. The green stars that you see, there's seven green stars on that map. That's where each city councillor lives in their respective district. One of the things that you can do on your computer is that when you look at what the lines that we have drawn, that is the city council districts prior to this redistricting, okay? So this is as they exist today. You can hover over those lines, and David, if you'll do it again, like you can see his cursor right here, as he touches one of the lines, it goes and tells you what the demographics and what the census is in that district. Now, the next filter we want to use has to do with the proposed city council adjustments, or the, what would show the new districts at this point in the process. This is a process, so this is what we would call iteration 2.3. As you look at this, what you'll see is the existing blue lines, and then the red lines on top of it, and because of the demographic shift of more people moving to the west, what you have to do is balance that population. If you take the census number for the city of Mobile and you divide it by seven city council districts, the number that you come up with is 26,720. That would be the mean average for every city council district trying to equalize the population. We are using and allowed to use a 6% plus or minus as we balance the population. So if you look at what David has done here, you can see that as it exists today, there are 31,126 people in District 6, okay? But when you go back to the number I said, that the mean average that we're shooting for is 26,760 plus or minus 6%, the new number that we're shooting for is a population of That's what it actually is as it's drawn, because in District 6, because you had population growth, they had to give up some of their district to this district in order to help balance the population, and they had to take this parcel right here, put it into District 4, 5, excuse me, District 5, to balance the population there. So you can see that it's a give and take. As we subtract from one district, we have to go to the next district. The idea is that we've got to get very close to the 26,000 number when you do, when you balance all of the districts. The next thing we would like to do is we're going to focus on District 1, just to use it as an example, because the population in District 1 decreased over the last 10 years, where in District 6, what you saw was an example of an increase in population. So District 1, the current population, as it exists, is 24,638, which is below the mean average that we're shooting for, and so adding on to that district now, we've added this area right here, and this, I think it's right there behind it. So we're at 26,140 individuals in, that's being proposed, in District 1. David, go back to that just for a second. You will also notice, you know, that we have the demographics that are included every time you click on the line, you know, the demographics for that district would pop up. Now let's look at a shaded map, David, of that area. As we look at this shaded map, what the indication is that the darker the color is the greater the density of people that live there. Also, the reason you see what looks like a mosaic of little bitty pieces, those are census tracts. Those are when they took the census, they were defined by the Census Bureau as being a census tract, and so you can go into, you can click on any census tract, like this census ID, just click on one, David. You know, it has the census ID, tract number, and it tells what the 2020 population is, it tells what the voting age population is. So as you look at this map, and you think, well, golly, what's that? Well, what that is, is that's I-65, and nobody lives there, okay? So again, you have highly, heavily high density here, no density there, and then, you know, less density in different areas. But you can play what-if games, like if, what would happen if we added this census tract into that district? And that's the whole idea, to give the citizens and interest groups that want to play games with this and satisfy themselves that it's being done in a transparent fashion. That's why we're putting this on the website for your use. Yeah, I'm looking down, okay? So the other thing, the next item, where you see David clicking over on the left-hand side, these are what we call the demographic filters, and so this filter shows an area which is the predominantly African-American filter, correct, David? And the next one will be show predominantly white. I know that we've walked through this relatively fast, but I also know that if you play with it, then it'll become much more apparent to you of what we're doing. So what we're doing, we've called this iteration 2.3. The next time, we have another iteration, or change this map. The changes will be because of citizen input, and with collaboration with the city council, it will be 2.4, okay? But 2.3 will be archived, you know, on the website, so you can go back and see what changes were made between 2.3 and 2.4. The decision has been made that every Wednesday will be when we upload a new iteration of the map. So tomorrow is Wednesday, and based on feedback we've already gotten earlier this week, it's conceivable that we may have a 2.4 map that would be forthcoming, you know, tomorrow. David, if you can flip to the information tab. You know, we're hoping that this is going to give the citizens what you need, the tools to keep you informed throughout this process. As I've said, it'll give you a history of what we've done, it'll tell you where the next meetings are, what the scheduled meetings are, but we also have an opportunity for citizens to give constructive comments, and we encourage those that want to do that to fill out the form linked to this website, and it tells where you can put your name here, and the other information, what is your question, and we will be responding to the questions that you submit having to do with redistricting. Our citizens will receive a receipt of their comments and proposed changes to the map. They'll be reviewed by our legal team and the city council. So, Mr. President, that really concludes our presentation for a first-time walkthrough for citizens. For those that want to know more, we'll be having, we'll go back through this information with the virtual town hall meetings, the first of which will be at noon today, the next one at 5:00. Those results will be on this website, and also there will be meetings held in the communities, you know, with city councillors in the coming days, and that schedule will be, it may already be confirmed, but it will be publicly displayed also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Carroll.
One question, and this isn't trying to sound confrontational, but I thought that we were already at iteration 2.5.
No.
I think I was given a piece of paper where it was 2.5, or am I mistaken?
There's been, there's been two modelings done. One of them was between 4 and District 6, which became 2.4, and then the next modeling was done yesterday, which was what you're referring to as 2.5. What we're trying to do is come to some consensus to begin publishing those maps. So when this was built, it was actually built off the original 2.3.
So we'll actually be showing 2.5 when it comes up instead of 2.4?
It will be coming, but all of them will be put up. The 2.4 should go up tomorrow, 2.5 should go up right after that, so that all of those are archived on any changes that council has suggested.
Okay. Just trying to make sure that we're clear to the public in that they know that we're at iteration 2.5 already and not 2.3.
Ms. Lemmer.
Monthly finance report.
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, good. Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
And good morning to the council. This morning, I'm just going to give you an overview of, you know, the results for December and the first quarter, just to kind of give you an idea of how we're doing so far. As usual, we talked about sales tax first, and for the month, our sales tax revenue was $15.6 million, or about $1 million better than what we budgeted. And year-to-date, sales tax actual is about $48 million, and we're about $5 million better than what we had budgeted on sales tax. Total revenue, on the other hand, our budget was about $21 million, and we're about $4 million ahead of budget for total revenue, and year-to-date, we're about $9 million ahead of total revenue in our budget. Okay, you know, so the revenue is looking good, and I'll make a couple of comments at the end of this relative to, you know, what I think maybe expectations should be for the balance of the year. The expenses, all the different operating departments, the major ones have done well and have exceeded their budget, meaning that they're spending less than what was originally planned. Public safety is about, came in at about $20 million versus a budget of 25. Public Works came in at about 11 versus a budget of about 15, and the other nine departmental ones, some of the other budgets that we have throughout the city, came in at 7 versus a budget of 13. So all in all, we're about $43 million expenditures for our operating units. So what that does is that gives us about $9 million in addition to the surplus this year so far. Now that still just makes up about a little less than 30% of the $30 million that we took out of the surplus at the end of the year for the Brookly Airport. Going forward, I think there's some things that we probably ought to be aware of as we talk about where we're going to go in the future. If you all probably know, there are a lot of things going on in the economy today, some of these things really bear taking note. Inflation right now is at its highest percent, or its highest rate in 40 years, at 7% at the end of the year. Consumer stimulus checks that we relied on so heavily last year have ceased. We've got quite a bit of geopolitical uncertainty right now, which affects the markets, and the markets are kind of unstable right now, and all of these things can have an impact on how people spend their money, and which is really something that can affect our overall sales tax revenue going forward, if things don't change. So right now, we were helped a good bit in the first quarter by a big positive variance of real estate tax. I haven't really figured out exactly where that came from. It came in about $3 million better than what we had budgeted, but we're going to find out just exactly where that came from. And overall, in general, the operations are running as we would like, and I think we're in a good position going into the second quarter of the year. Any questions?
Anything from the council?
I do.
Mr. Jones?
I'm a little bit surprised to hear of the budget expenditures being less, especially with inflation factored in, and the increase in some of the things that we have to purchase. Is that due to work that we've got obligated not being completed, or are we completing projects at a lesser cost than what we had budgeted?
No, I think it's, well, it's probably a number of things, but one thing I would say as a contributor to that is that, you know, our headcount, which is a big component of our budget, is not up to where we had planned, and that has been, that was the case last year, and I think that's the same sort of situation that we find throughout, throughout the whole economy, with people having difficulty finding people to fulfill obligations that we need in the city. So that's probably one of the biggest factors that are affecting our budget right now.
Carol.
So we, our unfunded balance, or our fund balance, again, now with these numbers is somewhere around $67 to $69 million outside of the 10% requirement.
Yeah, we're probably around $115 million right now.
So, but in that $115 million, we also have a 10% requirement.
Yeah.
So.
Two months.
Two months. Two months, correct. But outside of that two months, we still have an unassigned fund balance that could be used for additional projects within the city, throughout the city, that we haven't obligated to anything.
That's correct.
So, and that amount is...
Well, we have, we would say we've officially not allocated anything by moving it into another account, but we do have, we do have a plan for spending a lot of this money going forward, as we've talked about in the past.
Well, they're not in a budget line item, so they're not allocated to anything at this time.
Correct.
So what is that balance again, out of the $115 million?
I'd say it's probably around $65 million.
67, 65, 67 to 69 million.
And other councilmembers. Thanks so much.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second?
They're properly moving second, in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on June 18th in Tricentennial Park and May 20th in Cooper Riverside Park.
So moved. Second?
They're properly moving second, in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Bill Barr?
Public hearings. The public hearing to consider the revocation of the business license of Hussein Abdullah doing business as discount zone has been canceled. Public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at twenty-six, twenty-seven sixty-six La Crenne Street, three thirty-one Smith Street, twenty sixty-one Tucker Street, four fifty-six Booker Street, three oh, uh, seven Gaston Street, and public hearing to fix the cost for securing the structure at twelve fifty-eight Skywood Drive.
This opened up the public hearings for these said properties that were just mentioned by the city clerk. If anyone present in the ordinance would like to come and have, um, and talk about any of these properties, we ask that you do so at this time by speaking at the podium on the top of the level here. If anyone present would like to speak. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Wanda Ramon?
Good morning to the mayor, the staff, city council members. Uh, this morning, um, I had requested that the hearing on, uh, revoking the business license for Hussein Abdullah be canceled. And I wanted to bring the council up to, uh, up to date on what the City of Mobile has been trying to do to get this, uh, business in compliance. Um, and with me today, I have Commander Jonathan Lee. He's going to give you a, a little bit more in-depth, uh, um, presentation on what's been going on at that location. But, uh, for brevity purposes, I will tell you that, um, the, uh, discount zone located at five oh seven Azalea Road came on the radar for the Mobile Police Department because of the numerous calls that we've received for service for, uh, illegal activity at that location. And so, dating back to twenty seventeen, we were aware that there was, uh, drug buys in the parking lot, uh, drug sales going, coming, uh, from people coming and going, and they were selling, uh, paraphernalia inside the store. So in twenty seventeen, the City of Mobile Police Department, uh, executed a search warrant at that location. And at that time, Hussein Abdullah was the owner of the discount zone. Um, when we executed the search warrant, we found a lot of drug paraphernalia used to, uh, smoke crack cocaine inside the store. We ended up arresting, um, an employee of the store, and we, um, um, we were able to determine that this was a problem location. Uh, and on April tenth of twenty seventeen, we sent a drug nuisance letter to Mr. Hussein Abdullah, instructing him and informing him that this was a, uh, a location that was, uh, on our radar. There have been numerous arrests of illegal drug buys and sales at that location, and that we told him that he needed to get his business, business in compliance. He needed to stop the illegal drug activity at the location. He could not give us plausible denial and say, "I didn't know this was going on," because his own employee, uh, was arrested, and we also seized drug paraphernalia from inside that store. All right? We fast-forward it now to, uh, twenty twenty-one, and we started getting, uh, more calls, and we started doing some investigation. And from, uh, the twenty, well, from twenty seventeen up until November twenty twenty-one, we had five hundred and eighty-eight calls for service, which included assaults, domestic violence, robberies, uh, persons shot at that location. Um, and so what we did, uh, from that date, uh, because we continued to get calls from citizens of the illegal activity, the numerous calls of having to go up there, arrest people, we were not getting any results from that, no long-term results. And so we have a statute, a civil statute, and what I did is I filed a motion, uh, a, a complaint for a temporary restraining order, uh, in circuit court, asking that this property be declared a drug nuisance and that we lock that business down until we could get a handle on the crime. And what I have before me is a copy of the complaint that I filed in circuit court, and I wanted the, uh, council to get a copy of this, uh, if I can. And, and, and it details and outlines the reasons for the temporary restraining order. And, and basically, it's because drug activity is occurring at that location. Um, the police department has done everything they could do to utilize all of their intel, all of their arrest powers, and yet the continuation of drug activity, uh, is occurring. Um, we had a hearing in circuit court, let's see, had a hearing in circuit court on the TRO on January twelfth of this year. Uh, at that time, Hussein Abdullah showed up, uh, with an attorney and says, "I don't, uh, I no longer own this, uh, spot, five oh seven Azalea Road. I don't own it anymore." And so I said, you know, "With, with your word, we're going to need some documentation to prove that you don't own this spot, this, uh, location." Um, we had done a diligent search on the property through our tax records. Uh, this particular location is problematic because they played the, um, shell game of transferring the ownership, uh, having different corporations own it. And so to, um, to fast-forward it till today, this morning, Judge Wyden, Wyndham, um, uh, dismissed Abdullah as Abdullah Hussein as the owner of the business. Come to find out, the property was also in bankruptcy, uh, along with other convenience store properties that Hussein, uh, owned. Uh, because he was not doing what he was supposed to do in bankruptcy court, they removed that one parcel out of bankruptcy and put that lot, that, that five oh seven Azalea Road into receivership. So PNC now owns the five oh seven location. PNC Bank now has leased that property to one of Hussein's former business partners, who was present in twenty seventeen, which we did a search warrant on that location. I know, it's kind of confusing. And so now I am, because of the order today, I will now have to research again and see if I can substitute Mr. Asmir as the, the manager of that particular property. And what I want to do is turn it over to, um, Commander Lee, for him to, it, further explain to you the frustration that the Mobile Police Department is experiencing in the number of cases and man-hours that we have, uh, exhausted trying to get, uh, some compliance, uh, at that location.
Uh, Judge, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, not Judge, but, but Judge, who holds the business license?
Interesting, the business license, uh, they have not gotten a business license at that location for a couple of years. I checked the revenue department, revenue department, and this location has a ABC license, no business license since twenty twenty. And I've been in contact with the revenue department and, and, and trying to figure out how can this business continue to operate. We're just trying to do whatever we can from a standpoint of, 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 of trying. If they can't come in compliance, shut this business down.
So it could be just, uh, oversight where they just didn't renew the city?
It's not an oversight. I mean, you know, if you're in business, you pay your business license and you pay your taxes every year, you know? Everybody else has to, why doesn't they have to? You know?
So they currently have a, an alcohol, an ABC license?
Yes, and, and have substantial sales.
Is, is...
Uh, and, and yet they don't pay their taxes. So now Hussein says, "Abdullah, I don't own this property." Asmir says, "I am the, uh, I'm leasing this property from the bank. Uh, uh, I'll be responsible for this property," but yet he has not, uh, paid for the, um, back taxes, and he doesn't have a business license. And yet they have been open until we shut them down on January twelfth, or January fifteenth.
Good morning. Uh, just want to reiterate some of what Ms. Ramon said. I'm familiar with this area, five oh seven Azalea Road. She made reference to the operation we did in twenty seventeen. In that operation, I was lieutenant over narcotics and vice, and not just this store, but there were numerous stores in the area that were selling glass pipes with frillow pad together. And there's only one use for that, and that's to ingest crack cocaine. So we did an operation at that location where we did a search warrant. We arrested, uh, one of the, um, workers there for selling it. We also, um, uh, made contact or did a search warrant with, uh, Mr. Asmir's location. The letter was sent to Mr. Abdullah, who owned the property. Uh, but the place has continued to be a problem throughout, uh, the last several years. There was another drug operation done in twenty eighteen. And as a captain, I was originally the captain of second precinct, and that was within my precinct. And there was always a, uh, an area of problems as loitering and drug activity, um, kind of prevailed over there. Uh, most recently, in November of twenty twenty-one, we had some complaints. We specifically had a complaint from a lady who was so fed up with it, she went to the, uh, gas station and had work, and the lady, actually, one of the workers, had words with her, uh, making it, making her feel as if it was not okay to call the authorities over drug activity. So that's when we investigated, and we did, uh, numerous drug buys in the parking lot area, and even some coming out from the business. Uh, we concluded that with a search warrant, um, and that's when we did, recovered drugs in the parking lot, actually even in the business from the patrons. And so we arrested five people at that location. Uh, and we probably, uh, conservatively, since November, only two months, have probably put, uh, around five hundred man-hours just in this alone. So it is a problem area, but it's a problem store that seems to be a hub of that. And, um, uh, Mr. Abdullah and Mr. Asmir have been familiar with this area for quite some time and the issues with that.
And of course, Mr. Scott? Jones?
Yeah, we, we've got resolutions every week where we recommend approval to the ABC Board. There's four of them this week for issuance of these licenses. Have we ever reached out and, and tried to have that license pulled from the, uh, ABC Board of Issuance? Well, I'm, I'm asking, asking, I mean, we, we're the ones that make the recommendation for approval, this body. So have we ever made a recommendation to pull a, a license from the ABC to a business doing that, that's got issues like this?
So, Council President, Mr. Jones, the, uh, we have, and those are usually in related, more related to undercover operations where minors were being sold alcohol at certain establishments. But, uh, Curtis Graves with Strategic Initiatives works pretty closely with the ABC Board on compliance checks.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Carol, are you finished?
Uh, I, I guess then my question is, is there an action we can take to be productive in removing that liquor license from that, that location? And what would that be?
Not in this particular instance, because this is not directly related to alcohol. What we're doing is what we can do. Now, what Ms. Ramon is doing is, is the procedure that we need to take to make sure that this happens.
But, but we've got a, a establishment that's selling alcohol that has a license that we recommended approval, that we know has issues. So why do we not have the authority to go back to the ABC Commission and try and get this pulled if they're still doing business and we know that there's issues that reside there?
So, so I, I, I understand the question you're asking, but you have to understand that this is, the actions here are drug-related and related to illegal activity. That is a different lane than the administrative procedures for alcohol. So it is, as Chief Barbara mentioned, whenever it's related to selling alcohol, whether it's illegally selling or selling without a license, then the Alcohol Control Board or the ABC would be, then be involved. This issue is a criminal enforcement issue, and ABC does not have that type of authority dealing with criminal enforcement. That, that is Ms. Ramon, Ms. Ramon and the police department. So it's just a different lane, a different avenue.
John, Mr. Scott?
Uh, Mr.?
Ho, hello, Ms. Carol? Sounded like somebody from the special wants to chime in first.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Mr. Carol's question.
Uh, it, it said it sounded like somebody down there wanted to chime in first.
Just to follow up on Ricardo Woods, that what Ms. Ramon is doing is pursuing a statute specifically about a drug nuisance that's a statute in Alabama. That's what the TRO was for.
Right. So the TRO would close them down anyway?
Well, it only, it's temporary restraining order, and I can only shut it down for a certain period of time, then they reopen. But when I started doing my research and I realized they didn't have a business license, that's another avenue in which I can get some type of remedy, because the city council issues the business license. But then I determined, you can't revoke a business license if you didn't have the business license.
But...
So the, the thing I'm requesting is, and I'm going to substitute the, the name of, uh, and put Asmir, uh, as a person, that if he is trying to get a business license now, that perhaps that you won't issue a business license based on the fact that I've got a criminal complaint, uh, in circuit court of illegal activity. We know that it's continuing. He's done nothing to fix it or remedy the problem. And so what y'all can do is deny the request for a business license.
We don't issue business license.
But you can revoke, if, I mean, if they get it, because what revenue tells me is that if he pays up his, the prior taxes, he's entitled to a business license. Once he gets a business license, city council can revoke the business license.
Uh, one more, Mr. Carol has the floor. One, one more question. Um, I don't remember the process on the sale of liquor and granting of liquor license from the state, and I think this is where Scott may have been going. Uh, if you, if there is a requirement, I can't remember if the, the process for liquor license start here locally, and the investigation background check, check is done here, then it goes to the state and comes back to us. And if that is the process, and he does not have a business license here, then he doesn't, I don't think he meets the first requirement for a liquor license. And if that's the case, then his liquor license ability from the City of Mobile should also be revoked so that he can't have a liquor license coming from the state. That also weakens his ability to do business at that corner, because the types of sales there are onesies and twosies. So that also gives us, gives leverage to the case, and I think that's what you were trying, what you were trying to articulate. So, uh, if, if he doesn't have a, a business license, how can he have a liquor license? You know, so that's, that's, that's the question here.
That, that, that's the pinnacle question. So here's, here's what I think I missed is, Ms. Ramon, Ms. Ramon gave us a great deal of information. One of the things she said was, "This business hasn't renewed their business license for some year." They had a business license initially. They have not, when she said they haven't paid their taxes, what she's talking about is what Mr. Carol just alluded to, Mr. President. So at one point, this business did have a business license. During that time, that's when the city council would have issued a liquor license. They have not since renewed, and so they are now operating out of compliance on the business license component and the criminal activity that she is talking about via statute. When they, you all would have given them permission to get a liquor license some time ago when they were compliant. They are now out of compliance, and so we can't use the avenue of taking what they don't have. The secondary part is, we're saying, because we have not proven in court with that TRO right now, even though there, we know there's criminal activity, they would still come in and try to apply for a business license. And what Ms. Ramon is saying is, in the event that happens before, before she's able to get a TRO, she wants you all to be on notice that as soon as they get one, we would start due process to try to take it away using this other avenue.
Quite, one last question. Is it legal for us to take the stance that they cannot have a business license at that location at this point in time?
Can you give me a time to check that out? There may be a way, but I don't have the ordinance in front of me right now.
Have you done any research to find out if we can take that stance?
I believe you can take that stance, but, I mean, I'm not the attorney for city council, so I don't want to, he's...
I'll check it out.
...want to defer to Mr. Harrow.
Right. And, and, but right now, we can't do anything about it anyway.
But I was just, I wanted to place you on notice that this is coming, and I'm going to file another motion. I'm going to continue to do whatever I've got to do to stop this business from operating in this community, um, and, and...
Excuse me, Mr. President?
No, you, Mr., Mr. Hope?
I just, uh, this is, kind of intrigued me, and I've been talking to the revenue department a little bit while this is going on. I mean, the, uh, the situation there today is, is that, um, they have paid for a business I mean, the, uh, the situation there today is, is that, um, they have paid for a business license. However, we have not issued a business license because they are behind in their taxes. That, that is the situation today.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, this, yes.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
Very quickly, because I think Mr. Dave's ought to have an opportunity since it is in his district. Uh, they have applied for a business license, but they haven't paid their taxes. I think we've come across some of those intermittently throughout the city. So I guess one question is how do we catch people and make them pay if they are not caught up? And how do they continue operating when they are not caught up or don't have a business license? Um, the other thing is the liquor license probably just transfers to the new owner. Uh, or does that come before us to allow the transfer? Because if that happens, then we have a, a say in that.
It was denied. The transfer was denied.
Okay. Aren't they still selling liquor?
Yeah. They have a current one. I mean, this is a corporation and they play the shell game and it's just.
But the new owner has, they have transferred the liquor license to the new owner.
They have a current liquor license?
But they have to transfer it to the new owner, have we got?
And then the paperwork says it was denied, so, um.
Well, then why are they selling liquor?
They're closed right now and.
At this time, I ask the audience, please, to keep down your sidebar conversations and everything else at this time as a business meeting. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. One.
Mr. President.
Yes.
So what we, what Ms. Ramon is trying to accomplish is informational for the city council. At this point, we're not asking for any action by the council. But, uh, if Mr. Orledge would look at City Code 34-63, it should authorize the revenue director, the ability to put any business app, business license application and refer it to city council. And so you're now armed with the information, uh, that Ms. Ramon is giving you.
Mr. President. Mr. Orledge. That exact language is the revenue director shall have the authority to investigate all applications and may refer any application to the council for determination on whether their license should issue. So it can be submitted to y'all and, uh, when that happens, we can take it up. But I also think that they need to keep moving forward with the criminal nuisance case and, uh, you know, they need to get the taxes paid and I don't know, maybe they need to be audited too, to make sure that they've been paying taxes. I understand, wasn't it like $900,000 worth of liquor that's been sold there in the last some period of year? Is that what it is? So is that amount of taxes been paid?
No, it has not been paid.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Dave.
This location has been an open sore in District Five for years. I want to, I want to say, first of all, I appreciate Ms. Ramon's efforts and Chief Ryan's efforts and everybody who's working on this to try to get it resolved. But as Ms. Ramon has pointed out, that, that these people are very astute at playing the game. They move it, they move, they got a liquor license, they got a lease, they got a business license, they got an owner and they move it around and they move it to family members and own corporations and this, that and the other thing. And every time something comes up, they move title of this, that or the other thing to someone else. She, she's dealing, she's dealing with some very clever people who are, who are very adept at figuring out how they can avoid the hand of the law. Now, I want to remind everybody that this location is across the street from two schools, from Denton Middle School and Davidson High School. We have a lot of kids that are at risk from this location, leaving aside all the average citizens that are at risk from this location. I'm in favor of us using every legal means to shut this place down as quickly as we can do it. And I appreciate the efforts of the administration and the police department to do that. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Thank you all.
Mr. President, let me just say that, that the administration concurs 100% with Mr. Dave's and thank you for the explanation of why we are where we are. Councilman.
Mr. President, we have a number of, uh, people signed in for, um, several different agenda items. So I will call all of those related at, um, to, you know, together in succession.
Right before you start, again, all speakers are to speak on top and all units, please hold down all your commotion and applause, please. We ask you to do. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Reverend Tony Allgood regarding, um, ordinance 39003. Following Reverend Allgood will be Vanessa Hollinshead.
And again, to all speakers, you ought to give your name and your address. You have three minutes. Uh, the bell will sound in two minutes. When summarizing the third bell means that your time has expired. And again, all speakers are to speak on top. Once, uh, Reverend Allgood finished, then the next speaker.
You're after Reverend Allgood.
Oh.
Okay. Right.
I'm Reverend Tony Allgood. The 214A, the Sales Avenue, Mobile 36607. I'm the pastor of the United Methodist Intercity Mission here in Mobile. I'm also a tri-chair for the Alabama Poor People's Campaign, a national car for moral revival, and I'm on the executive board and the southeastern coordinator for the National Union for the Homeless. All these organizations are opposed to this ordinance. This ordinance is morally indefensible, constitutionally questionable, and for those that follow the Christian faith held up against this ordinance, the gospel, it's biblical heritage. Now homeless people do not lose their rights of citizenship once they become unhoused. They still vote and they still pay taxes. They go purchase anything within the city limits of Mobile. As a citizen too, I have my garbage picked up each week. If I go to a public sponsored event, I can expect a portalet and a wash station there. There was a complaint of supposedly about the litter in the camp. Would do like Mike Dow did when he was mayor. He put portalet and containers to collect garbage by the camp. And he did more to help the homeless here in Mobile than anyone before him. And Sam Jones, Sam Jones pushed to have McKinney Place, the shelter for homeless women opened here at the mission where I serve. And we had at the mission because it was on church property and the city or no one else could have checked us having it. This present administration has done everything that it can to hurt the homeless since it's been in office. This includes buying property to destroy the camp, purchasing property that McKinney Place needed to build a state of the art homeless shelter and day center. And now this ordinance pushed the homeless all the way out of the city limit. Martin Luther King said, "It's not enough to hurl a corn at a beggar, but a system that creates beggars has to be restructured." Restructuring is the answer in working together rather than this ordinance. How can we worship? How can we worship a homeless Jesus on Sundays and then criminalize, criminalize the poor and the homeless all week long?
Audit, audit. Thank you, Ms. Oring. Audience, again, please, um, no under a pause, please. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Ms. Hollinshead and following Ms. Hollinshead is Iris McCants. And all speakers will speak from the mic at the top.
Good morning, city council. I'm here with a solution for the pollution that we have in the city of Mobile. I was born and raised here.
Mr. President, I hate to stop you. Give us your name and your address, please. Your name and your address.
I'm sorry. My name is Vanessa Garrison Hollinshead. My address is 1856 Jones Avenue. Okay. So what I've come today is to offer a solution for the problem that we have in our town. I grew up in Mobile. I love this city, but what I'm seeing now is unacceptable. The problem that we have, that we need a solution for is crime, homelessness and the abandoned housing. I have the exact situation to help our town. We will go into the system of crime. The persons that are on probation, if you want to learn a skill and have a way of paying your probation without doing illegal things to stay in the system, it is going to be repetitive until you get a situation involved in place to be able to take care of that probation. Otherwise, you're going back to jail. My plan will allow them to get a skill from experienced people like painters, brick masons, landscapers, roofers, if you want to do floors, whatever that skill is, we and our dream team will be able to minister that skill to individuals so they can have a work about themselves. They're not going to ever get out of crime, having to go back and forth doing crime to pay the probation. If you give an outlet to an individual who wants to get out of crime, they will accept this opportunity to get a skill. I know of a person that's sitting in this room right now who helped build this, paint this building. He's been painting over 50 years. That knowledge needs to go to someone else. You're not going to learn it in a book. You're not going to learn it by looking at TV. You're going to learn these skills that I mentioned by OJTE, on job training. But I don't want Mobile to get into a situation that we feel that we're the only one here. I have worked and retired from IBM. That simply means I've been moved. I've seen the same problem west, east, north, south. Abandoned houses, crime and sad to say homelessness. We can fix this Mobile. We can put a program together to educate a team to take care of some of these abandoned homes. I have one right across the street. I live in a very nice neighborhood. Every morning when I say, "Good morning, sunshine," I look at this abandoned home. It's been there 12 years that I know of. Nothing is happening. It's an eyesore. We keep our property fine, land, everything's looked wonderful, but that eyesore is right in the middle of our street for 12 years. You don't think we need to do something about the homelessness and bringing in the homeless people into these abandoned homes and buildings?
Thank you. Thank you so much your time has inspired.
Okay. That's my time?
Yes, ma'am.
I am so sorry. I'm hearing it impaired and thank you all for listening.
You're, you're, you're fine.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Iris McCants, following Iris McCants is Pamela Petway.
Good morning. My name is Iris McCant. My address is 9802 Winchester Drive, South Sims, Alabama. I'm, um, doing, um, urban camping and property use of property place. I'm here on behalf of the homeless, homeless that is a concern for our city. I represent my church, HR CM, where Pastor Clans Brown is my pastor. We help through feeding and clothing drive. My question is, will you help be a part of the solution by partnering with various agencies and help them? When you move them, they just move from one place to find somewhere else to go. So we ask that if you can help be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Petway, following Ms. Petway is Elizabeth Chipolich.
How y'all doing? My name is Pamela Petway.
Miss Petway, put the mic closer to your, to your, thank you.
1665 Club House. Um, I just wanted to, um, you know, there's so much going on in this city with the homeless. You know, I'm part of it too. Just, uh, got help with a few homeless agencies. And I feel like that the city of Mobile needs to do more to help us instead of, you know, putting us out on the street. You know, there's so much going on with, with the economy and the, uh, the lifestyle that people live, but I don't feel like everybody is a victim. I mean, uh, to be victimized with the situation, you know, and the homeless, we on, we, we've been, we've been going through, we've been going through so much and we really need our help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Elizabeth Chipolich is Melissa Alvarez.
Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Chipolich. Um, my family's address is 1860 Government Street. Um, and I'm here, of course, to talk about, um, the proposed ordinance relative to banning certain activities like urban counting. I am the founder, uh, and the administrator of the Homeless in Mobile group. Homeless in Mobile is a community of almost 7,000 people. We are an active Facebook group that we are advocates for the homeless. About 20% of the followers are homeless. I started the group because I worked at 1860 Government Street for 20 years, right next door to Memorial Park. And I watch the sadness and reality of homelessness in Mobile. Um, I'm no longer working, so God has called me to minister personally. I do rescue ministry to those who are either too mentally or physically ill to access uh, social services. Um, but I want to talk to you today, I think, um, Reverend Allgood talked to you about the humanity part of this, um, this issue. I want to say to you, mayor and city councilman, there is a humanitarian crisis in Mobile, Alabama, that you have no idea exists. There, it's behind the dumpsters, it's in the woods and you want to fight crime? Do you want to improve the city's image to the folks that get off of the, um, cruise ships? Then you address homelessness. The reason there's a problem, a huge problem right now in Tillman's Corner is because about eight months ago, there was about 30 acres cleared for some commercial developers. That area that was cleared had been home to many homeless people for years. When you bulldoze a person's home, even though it's a tent, it's their safe haven, there's going to be consequences. People are camping on city property because they have nowhere else to go and to throw them out is inhumane. So I want to talk to you about homelessness. Nobody knows it like I do. And if you think they're all a bunch of drug addicts and drunks and thieves, you're wrong. Right now, I've been ministering for six months to a man who's 60 years old. He has the mentality of an eight-year-old. His parents took care of him their entire lives. They died, did not plan for his future. He's severely intellectually developed and he's on the streets, severe diabetic. I go every day and give him his insulin shots so he doesn't die. I know homelessness. So let me tell you some. So let me tell you some solutions to the problem. From, um, sir, from your proposed ordinance, obviously trash is a problem. Well, how about some of these programs that other cities, like in Arkansas and in North Carolina, have developed? Trash for Cash. You get, you go to certain areas of the, the city and you let the homeless people know-
Okay, yeah, yeah, your time has expired. You know, thank you so much and everything.
Thank- I've got a lot more to say. I would like to talk to you gentlemen, one-on-one, about that.
Yes. Let me remind the, the ordinance that this particular ordinance, we are not going to vote on today. We have a committee meeting on this afternoon. And again, all statements are to be made to myself, the chair. Cannot address any individual council members. And again, each person has three minutes. Two minutes will give you your warning, one minute summarizing everything, and then the last bell, your time has expired.
Um, Ms. Alvarez. Following Melissa Alvarez is Patrick Crabtree.
Melissa Alvarez, 8108 Sullivan Way, Theodore, 36582. Like the lady that you just heard, Ms. Elizabeth, I'm also part of her groups and part of a lot of groups that people are here for. I service the Tillman's Corner area. We've all seen it. I'm not going to sit here and preach because it's not, we all know what it is. What we need is a solution. They need options. There is no options in Mobile, certainly not in Tillman's Corner. The trash is an issue. You're right. So is homelessness. So is mental instability. So is financial instability, which most, if not a hundred percent, of the homeless have. There are things that the city can do. As I was sitting here earlier, I did not know this until now. Apparently, we have money that is not allocated nowhere, sitting in the budget. So how about we dig deep in our pockets and allocate some of that now that we know that it's there? If you think you're not affected by this because you're a city council or, I don't know, even the President of the United States, you're wrong. Everybody in this room has got that one aunt, uncle, cousin. You might refer to them as the black sheep of the family because nobody wants them around because they think they drink too much, they do drugs, or they're homeless. Not everybody in this building grew up in a brick house with a white picket fence. Some of us have actually lived in tents and grew up not knowing where our next meal is. I urge you, when you go to vote on this, to please dig deep within your soul. Ask yourself, what would I do if I had the money? Which apparently we do because it's on record now. What are we going to do about it? You cannot let your brothers and sisters keep living like this. And each one of us are brothers and sisters in soul. When you lay your head down tonight on that warm pillow and that blanket in your bed, wonder, what would I do if I was out on the streets right now? Probably wouldn't make it. You know how many people do not make it out there? I have took people to the hospital. I've watched a man die on the streets because he didn't have medication, because he couldn't get downtown to the free clinic or anywhere. It's just not, we need options. We need things in place for everyone.
Thank you.
I am Patrick Crabtree. I live at 118 Abrams Street. Respect, what does it mean to me? Kind of reminds me of the British sitcom, Keeping Up Appearances. Hyacinth was the B-U-C-K-E-T bouquet. This is what the city seems to be wanting to do, be a bouquet and not a bucket. From what I see today, you have little regard unless you're rich or you're a Christian. Yes, I'm going to tie that in. The homeless ordinance is about curing a symptom, not a cause. Mental illness, lack of job opportunities, lack of training, mental capacity. It's about, it's also about creating a debt, debtor's prison because that's what you're going to create. Our country was not founded on that. You're taking away the police from doing their job, worrying about a homeless person that's probably not going to even create a crime other than just living on the street. This is sad. I'm not a Christian, I'm a Jew. So for you, I guess all I'm good for is pay my taxes and pay your salary because you disrespected me by not following the law, by opening with a Christian prayer, saying that my, my, my beliefs are not important, but I'm good enough to pay your taxes. So let me bring you back to Christianity. You're all set up here proud to show that you are a Christian, but you're not doing it with this ordinance. Jesus didn't say, he said, "When you pray, don't make the public spectacle. Go in a closet and pray." But you sat up here, you make a bit to do about it, but you're going to put people on the street and you're going to put them in prison for something they cannot help for themselves. They have a problem. Drug addicts are a problem. They have a mental illness. They have a chemical imbalance. If you're truly a Christian, do what is expected of you. Do the right thing. Don't be like Hyacinth Bucket and try to be a bouquet. Clean up and follow your own ordinances. Come in my community at 118 Abrams Street. Clean up my street where it's a mess. Talk about trash? Clean up your own ordinances before creating others that create another problem. Do what you should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Wagner and Robert Battles.
Herb Wagner, 732 Jimmerson Street, Mobile, Alabama. Thank you. Happy Mardi Gras. I, uh, much of what I had wanted to say has been said. I was going to ask some questions such as, uh, how much of our budget is dedicated to addressing the issue of homelessness? How many people in the city, on the city staff, do we have going to the camps like these other people who are giving their times? Who on the staff is looking at these, these, uh, and finding solutions for this issue? How many conventions have you attended dealing with homelessness? How many times have you convened the people here who are working on the solutions to find out what their ideas are? I would like to know, also, now I don't remember what I would like to know. But, uh, I'm getting up there in age. But I, um, it is an issue. It is a problem. There are eyesores. They can make people feel uncomfortable. But destroying someone's home in the middle of the winter is, frankly, I find reprehensible. It's not a solution. That solution had, that approach has been applied again and again and again in this city and many other cities. It doesn't resolve the problem. In Belgium, they tried providing free housing to the homelessness, the homeless. What they found is that once people had a home, an address, what they found is that they had a place where they could get mail. They had an address to give an employer. They had time not just to walk around on the streets finding food. They, they found that they were able, uh, to actually get jobs. And this was eighty percent of the people who went into these. This is being tried in New York now. I think we should look into that solution with sixty-five million dollars available, unallocated, as has, as we have learned today. Uh, I warn us as a city to build our image not by wiping out and putting out of the eyesight what isn't going to go away and feeling we've done something. I want us to be a city that people will then look to and say, "My, my goodness, what have, look what they're doing. Let's find out how they manage this." Thank you very much. I appreciate your service, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Mr. President, my name is Robert Battles, Senior. I reside at 269 North Broad Street. I came here this morning just to speak to you briefly about the reapportionment and the redistricting. I thought it was very appropriate that I introduce you to Michael Anthony Figueroa, the architect of the supermajority formal government that we're currently discussing. Senator Figueroa and I were in meetings when they decided the supermajority formal government. It was not intended to be that African-Americans would disproportionately move up to a certain position, but rather that that would be leveraged among the councilmen, that you would have four, five, five votes in order to pass any type of legislation that would impact on the quality of life for the community. When you look at the medical field, Dr. Esteney Fauter has come up with herd immunity. Herd immunity is that time when so many people within communities will come infected that it will protect the community. But when we look at the supermajority formal government and the reapportionment, we need to make sure that the districts that are reapportioned, that the African-American voting population is the primary focus rather than density. Density means that I could have African-Americans in the community who are, who are kids, who don't vote, but yet still I have no opportunity for electability. Electability in the fourth district would give African-Americans the proportion that they need in order to make significant progress. I don't believe in all this thing about we should be racial polarized because when we come to the conclusion, the conclusion is that crime, violence, homelessness, and all of this impact on us just like it does in the visitor. So what we need to do, if we can come to a conclusion where we could get our community to understand that the most important thing that we could do. In conclusion, Doris Kearns Goodwin, who is a presidential historian, she says that if we're going to ever cut out the racial divide, that the racial divide will only be cut out if those who are privileged can look through the eyes of the underprivileged and see Jesus Christ. I believe that is our solution. I believe in, what I'm going to conclude saying today, that our Chief of Staff Barbara Gorn and the mayor Gorn, but I want to give an open invitation to Madam Sandy Simpson to come on my radio show and speak to the African-American community about his ideas about redistricting and reapportionment so that he could really work toward the goal that he started when he was first elected of One Mobile. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Battles.
Okay, um, I apologize, Mr. Battles, they had him on here at 39003. So now the next group of speakers are regarding Resolution 60099. Shalila Dowdy. Following Shalila is Reverend Jim Flowers.
Mr. President, could you explain what that ordinance says that she stated? So everybody's tracking that, please.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you read it, please?
Resolution 60099 is establish, uh, redistricting guidelines for council districts in the city of Mobile.
Good morning to the city council, mayor's team, office of the city clerk, and those in attendance at today's meeting. I am Shalila Dowdy and I reside at 1008 Barbara Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36617. I'm also the president of Stand Up Mobile and we do work centered around voter engagement. The 2020 census has revealed that those who are a minority in the state of Alabama are actually a majority in the city of Mobile. The 2020 census indicates that fifty-one percent of the citizens of Mobile identify as Black or African-American and forty-one percent identify as white, depicting almost a twenty thousand difference in the population. Looking at the makeup of the city, of the city's leadership, specifically the city council, it does not adequately represent what the city demographics are. The real question is, how long has the African-American community been underrepresented in the city of Mobile? Thanks to reapportionment occurring every ten years following the census, we are allotted the opportunity to adjust to the changes of the city and make sure that there is fair and equal representation. Given the data, Mobile should have a fourth city council district that possesses a Black voting age population that is well over fifty percent. Fifty-five percent would actually be more suitable. The current draft map that have been proposed does, does possess a fourth majority district, but the Black voting age population is forty-seven percent, which is well under fifty. The Supreme Court ruled in the Bartley versus Strickland case that in order for a district to be constitutionally required, minorities must constitute at least fifty percent of a minority opportunity district voting age population. The original three districts that are currently represented by African-Americans should be evenly proportionally strong. Currently District One and Three are packed with Black voters, while District Two Black voting population has been severely decreased. This action is very suspect given that we are aware of the major justification going on in District Two and the thousands of Black people that have been forced out of the district and pushed west. The lines needs to be adjusted where District One and Three population is, is decreased slightly to help with the needed increase needed in District Two. Last night it was announced that a federal court has struck down the Alabama congressional maps that were recently signed into law due to the maps lacking a second Black congressional district. I was one of the plaintiffs in the three, in the three lawsuits where we advocated for that second district. And I'm now turning my focus to my local area to make sure that the Black vote is not diluted in Mobile. It was discussed at this council meeting last week that we do not need to focus on race when drawing maps, when in reality, we do. I'm here speaking today to advocate for my community because Alabama as a whole, to include the city of Mobile, has a history of disenfranchising and diluting the Black vote. This has been seen in nineteen eighty-two in the case of voting versus the city of Mobile, where the court found that racial campaign tactics, racially polarized voting, and lack of responsiveness to the needs of African-American community were evident in the city of Mobile. Mobile does have a history of wrongdoing to Blacks, from the KKK bombing John L. LaFlore to the lynching of Michael Donald. When Black people remain silent, our needs and voices go unheard. And that is why I am here today. When we are not at the table, we are on the menu. In conclusion, I want to emphasize that when you have these maps drawn up and created, please take it into consideration to have them fair and equitable. Thank you for your time.
Reverend Flowers. Followed by Reverend Flowers is Reverend Sandy McQueen.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Jim Flowers. Uh, I'm the rector of All Saints Episcopal Church here in Mobile, 151 South Anne Street, uh, 36604. I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak this, this morning. Shalila, you have an ally in All Saints Church. Reinhold Niebuhr, acclaimed twentieth-century theologian, said this. "God's dream for the world is love, loving one's neighbor in particular, and the means of love is justice." So I'm here representing All Saints Parish in the name of justice. The mayor often speaks of One Mobile, but the reality is that there are two Mobiles, divided by race. It has been that way since Mobile was founded. We all know that. And it has always been that the Black citizens of Mobile have had to defer to the white power structure. I believe this unhappy division has stifled our progress as a city. We have an opportunity in our efforts for redistricting to take an historic step towards the goal of a fair and representative city government. The city of Mobile is majority Black. The city council should reflect that majority, plain and simple. As others have observed, the chief way to achieve- As others have observed, the chief way to achieve this equity in the redrawing of districts is to consider the voting population of the city instead of the general population density. That action would rightly affirm the integrity and power of one person, one vote, and will reflect more accurately the voting demographics of the city, that we know also. Recognizing the pervading distrust of the political process in our contemporary culture, I want to suggest one more thing. Please do this with complete transparency, real transparency. This plan should be one that we can all own. An open and honest process would go a long way in achieving that goal. Finally, this, we live in a state in which the legislator, legislature has a bad habit of enacting laws that are, that are at best unjust and at worst unconstitutional, evoking legal action by the likes of the ACLU and the Southern Poverty Law Center, resulting in burdensome legal fees shouldered by the Alabama taxpayer. If we fail at producing a just system, it will be challenged, costing the city substantial legal fees. In a letter to the mayor and the city council, the Southern Poverty Law Center has offered their help in redrawing the voting districts. I hope we will avail ourselves of their expertise. I ask that you do this right the first time, and perhaps we may take a significant step towards making Mobile really and truly one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Flowers.
Reverend Mc, Reverend McQueen, following Reverend McQueen is Reverend Sappho.
Good morning. I am Sandy Antonio McQueen. I reside at three fifty South Scott Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh four, District Two. Also, I'm pastor of Truvan, Christian Baptist Family Incorporated, located at eighteen fifty Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one seven, District Two. To the president of the city council, council members, uh, I'm here today to urge this administration and the city council to promote fairness and transparency in the redistricting process that is upon us. I am proud to be an African-American and a voting citizen of Mobile. I, like Jacob in the Bible, am proud of my heritage, but neither do I boast because of choices I have made, but I can say the Lord has never left me. Like Jacob in Genesis, the twenty-eighth chapter, verses ten through twenty-two, he had a dream. He saw a ladder reaching into heaven. I too also have envisioned the advancement of all citizens for our district that can be blessed through your actions as administrators and council members, that can keep the economic and social ladder affordable, reachable, and merciful to all of its citizens. I can say like Jacob that surely the Lord is in this place, but I knew not. I knew no not because of racial boundaries and differences that is connected to the ladder. I knew not because so many times a fair share of the pie was not even up for discussion. The process of redistricting should include the opportunity for persons who cannot get to the city council meeting in the middle of the day to participate. As the city of Mobile is majority African-American, it is essential that the city council districts are based on the voting population. Like Jacob who saw the ladder of possibility, as possibilities in human and divine power between earth and heaven, shoulder the Lord is in this place if only the reasonable, sensible, and reliable hearts and minds of this administration and council would acknowledge that the ladder of opportunity does not only belong to one man or one district, but to the people from whom you serve. We know, uh, that the, the way districts are drawn will impact who wins elections, but our desire, my desire is to protect, uh, the process from being abused and encourage those with the power to have the political will to make that decision, fair decision, with the support of all residents of the city of Mobile. Lastly, I urge you all to go about this process in a transparent way that allows true community involvement. Thank you and may God bless this redistricting ladder of progress.
Uh, thank you. Just before Reverend Sappho, um, are those the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, y'all present? Is y'all up there?
Yeah.
Uh, just want y'all to just say hello. I see y'all in y'all red. Just want to recognize y'all. Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta sorority.
Following Reverend Sappho would be Amelia Bacon.
Good morning to our council president Small, honorable members of the city council, our honorable mayor Sandy Stimson. I am Dr. Milton Sappho, a registered voter. I reside at seventeen fifty-five Maryvale Street, South End, District Three, and I am senior pastor of the historic Stone Street Baptist Church, Alabama's oldest Baptist church in District Two. It is on behalf of the miss, this membership and the citizens across this community in general who earnestly seek and desire equity that I stand before you, particularly the residents of District Two, to appeal to you on the issue of redistricting. In Mobile, we have an opportunity to get it right and be a model for communities across our state and across our nation when it comes to redistricting. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior said, "Voting is the foundation stone for political action." This foundation stone is being systematically chipped away, chipped away yet, but this is your opportunity to do what is right. It is vitally important to the future of Mobile that this mayor and city council redraw the current districts to give assurance to our city that all her residents are properly represented by the city council and this and future administration. I know that you realize that not only, uh, is it your moral obligation, but you are also bound by state and federal law that is done based on the current demographic. It is of utmost importance that the new map, when approved, reflects four majority black city council districts, uh, based on voting population. We need appropriate redistricting, redistricting action that will override the political pillar of oppression and overcome the placating words of perceived right with truth, justice, and equality. If there is a fear of retribution from a people who may in some way feel the political system wronged or overlooked them, you need not worry. History teaches us a lesson that we are a people of love and forgiveness. We would rather love and forgive those who may have wronged us than face divine retribution from God. I also have consolations for the citizens, uh, district, of District Two because it seems that the obligation to ensure fairness has been overridden by an effort to dilute the black vote in that district. Our desire and yours should be to protect this, uh, process from the apparent, appearance of, of abuse and encourage those with the authority and political will to make fair and just decisions that support all the citizens of our city. To that end, I ask that you address the following concerns, that the lines drawn reflect and ensure a majority of African-American voters in four districts, that you go about this process in a transparent way that allows true community involvement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the virtual meetings slated for today. Please continue them. Also, public meetings in different, uh, parts of the city at convenient times when working citizens are able to participate are recommended. So in the words taken from the book of Isaiah, "Come now, let us reason together. Let's work for the common good of the community." Thank you for your time. God bless and keep you all.
Thank you.
Following Amelia Bacon is Suzanne Schwartz.
Good morning. My name is Amelia K. Bacon and I live at seventy-one South Anne Street, and I am a citizen in city council district two. As a reminder of last week's council meeting, Beverly Cooper, who is the co-founder along with myself of Stand Up Mobile, A Blueprint For Us, a nonprofit, spoke to the council about our mission. Again, let me remind you what that mission is. Our mission is to bring the power of the black vote to elections at all levels, to educate voters on significant issues, to promote fairness in government activities. The issue of last week has not changed. Redistricting in Mobile is important, and how the process is conducted is a major importance and concern. It is imperative to the future of Mobile that the mayor and the city council redraw the current district to ensure all of our citizens are properly represented. Further, we believe you are responsible and obligated under the state and federal laws which have been mentioned earlier to make this happen. We believe that the new map should reflect a four-majority black city council district. This is our belief, but also a reasonable expectation. Again, there are four districts. We ask, why develop maps that would reflect something different when it comes to voter percentages? The Stand Up Mobile community and our community partner agencies recognize that the process is well as on its way. However, we speak to ensure that you are reminded that your next steps be aligned with what we deem equitable. We still have concerns about the map and the table that was previously released on the mayor's nightly email reflecting District Seven falling below the fifty percent mark for black voting population. While District Seven is a majority-black district, we are very optimistic, however, that the mayor and the council will live up to the obligation that under no circumstances would there be efforts to dilute the black vote in my district, which is District Two, or any of the other districts. We all understand that the way districts are drawn will have an impact on election wins, which communities are represented, how political power is distributed, and how laws are passed. Be assured, our desire is to protect the process from abuse and encourage those with power to make fair decisions which will support all residents of the city of Mobile. Lastly, Beverly Cooper of last week asks you to address three major concerns while working through this very important process. I will go through those three concerns to just reinforce what our expectations are. Number one, the lines as drawn may provide a majority of African-American citizens in four districts, but does not ensure a majority of African-American voters in the district. Please reflect the census demographic percentage in the African-American voter count per council district. Number two, we urge you all about this process, go about this process in a transparent way that allows true community engagement. Specifically, there should be public meetings and frequent public meetings in different parts of the city at times when working citizens are able to participate in the process, and of course, with a virtual option for those concerned about their health and their safety. As a note, I would like to acknowledge that we are indeed encouraged by number one...
Ms. Bacon, yeah, I hate to interrupt you, but everybody gets three minutes, and that's your three minutes there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Suzanne Schwartz, following Suzanne Schwartz is Charles Contra.
I'm short, so I had to make the microphone come down. Good morning, President Small, city council members, and Mayor Stimson. My name is Suzanne Schwartz. I live at three sixty McDonald Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh four. I'm a proud member of Council District Two. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you today. I'm here today to address the council as the president of the League of Women Voters of Mobile regarding Resolution six oh dash oh nine nine. First of all, I want to applaud the council's initiative in opening, opening up the redistricting process. Transparency in government has long been a priority of the League of Women Voters. The districts drawn during this cycle will impact and shape our lives for the next decade. Notably, the twenty-twenty census data for our city reflects democrat, demographic shifts warranting the creation of a fourth minority-majority district. This resolution is a great first step to provide clear redistricting criteria and to promote public input and transparency in the redistricting process. Community members know their community, the people who live there, and the specific needs of the community better than anyone else. Working together collectively can make positive change, help shape the process, and result in a better outcome. In addition to the in-person district meetings outlined under the guidelines, we would encourage that the guidelines also specifically provide for a way that those unable to attend a meeting be able to submit written comments to the council, including an opportunity to submit council district maps for consideration by the council prior to the drawing of the final maps. The adoption of this resolution takes us closer to transparency in the process than we have ever been before. We have not yet had the opportunity, by we, I mean the League, to fully study the data and maps under consideration for the mayor's, from the mayor's proposal, and look forward to the opportunity to comment further. Redistricting is a complicated, multi-step process which must ensure compliance with constitutional, state, and federal statutory requirements, especially the Voting Rights Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles Contra.
Good morning, everyone. I'm a voter here, registered voter, and I do participate in voting District One. I've been in Mobile two years. I've moved and transferred from the Midwest.
Ms. Carter, give us your full name and your address.
Oh, Charles Cantrell, eight seventy-one Cuskey Lane, Mobile, three six six one eight. And I'm here to speak on the redistricting. And as the mayor said about Huntsville, he looked at that as a planned city. It's mostly a professional white city, engineering, aerospace, really not good, uh, economic or population or demographic fit for Mobile, so that's one reason to probably not use that plan. Second, redistricting is used to increase the annex share of white participation voters, mostly in West Mobile. They take away from the African-American brown and black-skinned voting participation. This is the last thing Mobile needs. Any city needs diversity. Diversity is strength. Strength will improve your leadership, will improve your culture, will improve everything we've spoken today from homelessness to crime to trash to, uh, economic, uh, increase of the different, uh, gen, gen, people all across the city. And so, while we're looking at the current redistricting, basically, the mayor talked about his, uh, map, but he didn't mention the cost on that. So I'd like to see in full transparency the cost of this redistricting, and that basically, if it's not going to improve voter turnout, which in my mind, it won't, uh, we've been in a lot of different cities all across America, I live north, south, east, and west, and I can tell you, the city turnout for Mobile, Alabama, mayor, is the lowest of any state I've ever lived in, is anything. ever lived in, is only a little over 10%. So, drawing maps and lines is not going to change anything. You're going to have to change the mindset of the people who need equal representation. And you know who that is? That's the African-American, the brown, the black-skinned people. They need to feel good about themselves in the future. They need to feel powerful, and they need to feel if they participate in the voting that they can and will make a change. So, I challenge Mayor Stimson and the council, look at the amount of money you're spending, that's where out of figures, ten million to do with redistricting, whole fiasco, and actually go back to have a progressive city for Mobile. Have an HR1 version, put that up for a public vote. Tell the people to vote early by mail, vote absentee ballot, give them bread and water, open the churches and partner with people to get the African-Americans, the disabled and other people to the voting places. Use the Baptist churches, the Episcopal churches, the African-American faiths all across Mobile, and get the message out, regardless of color, you are powerful, you do have a voice, you do make a difference in your future. If we can take that amount of money for redistricting, move to change the mindset and culture, I can guarantee you'll see diversity and a better leadership for the city of Mobile. God bless you and have a great day.
Thank you.
Terry Mitchell and Anna Bush had to leave.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good afternoon. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. As much as I would have loved to speak on all of these other matters that have come before this body today, each of you all know we only get 182. So, I had to allow those who are here and their patrons to speak, and I'm grateful to see these people engaged. Please stay active with our municipal government. These matters that you see coming before us today, there's a lot more that's here week after week after week, and we're talking about millions and millions of dollars, and we wonder why the quality of life is the way it is, so please stay engaged. So, my petition for today is reflective, actually, of Chapter 38 and 46 of the Mobile Municipal Code. Early this morning, I communicated with the city clerk's office, and I provided some information to the people on that dais to let them know about what's going on. Now, for those who are unfamiliar, Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code deals with the Mobile Municipal Court, and Chapter 46 of that same piece of legislation or coding deals with the Mobile Police Department. So, what we're witnessing, and I've heard a lot about criminal activity today, this is one of those instances where, for four years, the courts have been dealing with a traffic matter for a law that does not exist. We're talking about resources that are being wasted constantly. We just on the last council agenda saw where there were three new members who are taking the bench. We need to have some idea and assurance that the reason that we're not seeing productivity or progress in the city is not a result from ill practices right here in this building. That is the issue that we're facing the most. Now, because of the timeframe, I'm just going to ask some questions. Hopefully, those can be responded to or answered. I don't see anyone from the legal department still here, so who knows what can be done? Hopefully, we can have some response from those down on the dais. What are our city leaders doing to ensure that taxpayer resources aren't being wasted or misused on meritless cases for laws that do not exist? There are many times that I go over onto the north side of this tower, and I watch cases, and there are several times where the city is not prepared to try those cases, and we have to send inmates back to jail simply because the city is not prepared to do that. So, I'm hoping that someone will be able to answer that. Is there any metrics for incriminated citizens who are wrongfully accused to file a complaint to be reviewed by an outside agency, meaning someone other than the police department or these, those people who are part of the judicial branch of municipal government? Is there an outside agency? Is there a metric for which that can be done? Because I believe it's not going to be advantageous if the same people who are causing these unlawful citations are the ones who are reviewing them. The next one, what consequences are set for judges and police officers who rule or issue out illegal citations which are unlawful? And lastly, I would say, we get, excuse me, we got people off of probation through community outreach and service in the past. I want to know what practices are we doing now to ensure that we don't have to repeat offenders that are causing so much issues in the city? And if anyone will have any answers, I greatly appreciate it.
The only person I see from the administration that possibly could answer some of those questions, I'll probably say to Director, if anything that you can, comment on that.
I'll get with Mr. Hill. We've got a regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, and we'll discuss the issues that he brought up for today.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Before she starts, let me chime in and say thank you to every citizen, every group, every individual that came down here today to speak to any one of the three items that are on their mind today, whether it was the camping ordinance, redistricting and reapportionment, and even the animal control items that they were here today to speak to that did not speak. Anna sent down some information on the ad hoc committee that was very helpful because it happened while we were not here, this new council. So, let me say thank you to everyone. And as we move this redistricting and reapportionment along, everybody knows it's near and dear to me, that we will continue to be transparent. We will continue to give you the most up-to-date information that we have, but most of all, we encourage you to participate in the process. If you have a concern, if you have an issue, you'd like this council to hear, I encourage you to be here every Tuesday until we pass this. Thank you.
Ordinance is held over, 39003, ordinance regarding urban camping and improper use of public places.
Move to lay over one week.
Second.
Improperly moving, second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, very briefly. I know a lot of the folks here that were advocating for the homeless have left, no longer in attendance this morning, but I wanted to put it out there to say thank you to all of them for all that they do to help our homeless, and I look forward to one day really diving in and trying to tackle the issue of homelessness in our city. It's a very difficult problem to arrive at a conclusion that is going to give us good results. And also remind them that everyone, that this ordinance that is put forward is truly not put forward to address all the issues surrounding homelessness. It is to address the immediate and necessary public health, public safety, aesthetics concern that is present throughout District Four and communities throughout our city. So, I look forward to having additional discussion regarding that at the Public Safety Committee meeting that is at 2:15, and hopefully, we can find some sort of way to move this thing forward so that we can address the immediate issue that faces our city. Thank you again.
Another council member. If not all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I don't pass.
Consent Resolutions 37026, consent resolutions held over. 37026, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of allowance retail liquor Class One license for club Elevate on Halls Mill Road. 40050, 051, and 052 are declaring the structures at 1006 Basil Street, 1337 Congress Street, 1479 John H. Campbell Senior Way of public nuisance and ordering them demolished.
No move.
Improperly moving, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I don't pass.
40053 and 054 are declaring the structures at 1062 and 1064 State Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Motion to table.
Second.
Improperly moving, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Are there any objections to any of these? I'll take all of these together. 21063, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for 2022 MS4 Stormwater Management. 01064, authorized agreement with University of South Alabama for consulting evaluation work for the Fiscal Year 20 Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Grant Program. 01065, authorized agreement with CSX Transportation for Beauregard Street, Robert M. Hope Overpass. 08066, approved purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative signposts and extensions. 08067 and 068 are approving purchase orders to emergency equipment professionals for aerial ladder, fire truck, and an enforcer pumper fire truck. 13069, authorized change order with Neil Schaefer for the innovating St. Louis Street Mobile Technology Corridor. 18070, authorized condemnation of land for the widening of McGregor Avenue. 37071, adopt the CDBG Home and ESG 2022 through 23 Action Plan.
31071.
No move. Improperly moving, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 31077 through 60090.
Move to waive the rules in order to consider these resolutions.
Second.
Improperly moving, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Stone.
Just, I don't know who this would go to, but I would like to see this next week what the process is for the ABC Board of Issuance to issue a liquor license. I see we recommend the approval, but what's the rest of that process until that organization gets the liquor license? In line with that, what does an organization have to do to maintain that license and keep that in good standing? Thank you.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk.
31077, authorized grant application to Bloomberg Center for Cities for Grant Assistance in Support of Their Leading City Procurement Reform Program. 310, no match. 31078, authorized grant application to the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for Homeland Security Combating Domestic Violence and Extremism Grant, no match. 37079, 08081, recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Barbecueing with My Honey on Dolphin Street, for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for the Insider Food Hall on Dolphin Street, and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for China Doll Seafood Restaurant on Airport Boulevard. 40082, 83, 84, 85, 86, and 87 are fixing the cost for demolition of structures and securing the cost for securing structures at 2766 LaCrenne Street, 331 Smith Street, 2061 Tucker Street, 456 Booker Street, 307 Gaston Street, and 1258 Skywood Drive. 60088, approval award a special bonus for the firefighter of the month. 60089 and 090 are determining appropriations to the Village of Spring Hill and Booker T. Washington Middle School Serve a Public Purpose and Approved Payment.
No move. Second.
Improperly moving, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 01091 through 60099.
Mr. President, I would like to suggest that the 60-099 be waived in order to vote on that. The rest of these be laid over for a week per council rules.
I am properly moved.
Wait, wait, wait. I think Councilman Carroll might have an amendment.
Do you have an amendment for that, William?
There's probably going to be an amendment. I was just going to tell you guys that. The League of Women Voters has asked for a friendly amendment to this, and I need to get with Chris and also with Anitra Bell Henderson before the next meeting to make sure that the language is right. I made that commitment earlier this morning in between pre-council and council. I am very grateful and gracious to all of you, being that you want to vote for this today, but there's a little bit more to this that the public would like to see. Well, it's not, it's, we can add it today, but I don't know if the language is correct. And what we're adding is simply a portion of it that adds what the administration is currently doing with virtual meetings for those that can't get out, also interactive meetings, so that the public can have some input through that interactive system. They like to have that as part of the resolution also, but I have not spent any time writing that language, so I can't really make the amendment now.
Okay, that's fine. We'll lay this over for council rules with the rest of them. Thank you.
Okay.
Announcements?
District Six, Councilman Scott Stone.
No announcements.
All right. All right, District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Sure. On February 15th will be our community meeting in the Mayesville area that, you know, as old school, I say beats 14 and 15. We will, I have asked the administration to have the precinct of the, I mean, the commander of the precinct that is responsible for that area to be there to discuss any crime issues or anything that we need to do to add additional safety and security for the neighborhood. I've also asked that the Department of the City that handles the selling of city-owned properties, invited properties, and things of that nature in our communities, and the process of how to redevelop and restore homes in that area also be there so that we can tell you how to get involved with that process. So, that is February 15th, 6 o'clock, at the Harmon Rec Center. Again, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came into the auditorium today to voice your opinion on any ordinance, on any resolution, or on any item that's going on in the city today, especially that of redistricting and reapportionment. Mobile has the opportunity now to do something special and to show that we are a long ways from where we were in 1965 and in 1985. I look forward to a continued conversation with the administration as we move forward to make sure that we see this process through.
District One, Councilman Penn.
No announcements.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
There will be a very short, shortened CIP meeting, I would imagine, immediately following this, in the council conference room to discuss the sunset of the one cent sales tax and any changes or information the council would like to receive regarding that so that discussions can be had at a future date. Thank you.
Counsel, okay. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we have been talking about redistricting, I just want to go ahead and announce for those who have not heard that we will be holding a redistricting town hall type meeting with the mayor and his administration at the Museum of Art on February 7th at 6 o'clock PM. I believe at this time, all the council members have set their meetings, but mine will be at the museum on February 7th at 6 o'clock. Also, Ziegler Boulevard work, we have an area that is closed, and traffic is being rerouted between Chalet Drive West and Chalet Drive East, closed for about a week and a half beginning tomorrow. This is all again for some drainage and construction work that is continuing out there, utility relocations. This second phase of the project is beginning to move westward, so that's why you are seeing these, this rerouting of traffic. So, just be aware, as always, the trucks and oversized vehicles are not permitted on the North Service Road because that is where this traffic is rerouted to. So, if you're in a big truck or an oversized vehicle, you're going to need... you're going to need to find another route to take if you are on Ziegler. The other thing I just wanted to bring up, we talked last week about house numbers and the difficulty that emergency vehicles and others have when there are no house numbers on homes. It is required, it is an ordinance, to have visible house numbers. And Colonel DeLapp was kind enough to send the ordinance to me. The painted-on house numbers on curbs are not part of what is required or allowed as an official house number. So if your house doesn't have numbers, or if you have a rental property that doesn't have house numbers, you need to rectify that. That's it.
And to District Three, this coming Friday, from 10 a.m. until noon, we will be having a food pantry in our district. Special thanks to Reverend Frazier of the Revelation Baptist Church, and also Pastor Clark of the First Baptist Church on Baltimore Street, and also Damon Roberts with the Neighborhood Development. This food pantry will be located at 1050 Baltimore Street at Taylor Park. Again, for all residents of District Three, you're more than welcome to come until 10 a.m. until noon, or until the food is ran out. This is going to be happening for the next several Fridays, and pretty much I'm putting my newsletter and also trying to get this information out to the district as soon as possible. Again, that will be this coming Friday from 10 a.m. until noon at Taylor Park 1050 Baltimore Street. Do we have anything else from the council? Got anything from the administration? Got to get a motion to adjourn this meeting?